Alright. Alright, let me see. Let's see, so this looks healthy alright gentlemen, so uh welcome uh no real announcements, I would just kinda kinda keep working problem sets. So with my earlier class, we finished section one point six, so what I'm doing now is I'm going back and like um. So when I make, when I, whenever I make you guys exams, what I do is I pull from all the question sets. So what could happen is potentially there may be questions on the exam that weren't necessarily assigned on in the homework. Uh the concepts are the same, so you should be able to handle them, uh but so what we're doing now is in preparation, in preparation for exam two. I'm trying to go back and see, okay, can we find, can we find some of those potential questions that um could pop up on the exam that were not necessarily assigned in the homework? Uh let me let this, these gentlemen in. Okay, so yeah, uh and again, we don't have to go through the questions that, that I'm choosing, I'm just choosing some kind of fill the dead air. Uh if you were to view all my sessions with the, with all of you all, all my students from this term, then you'll have a complete set of like worked out problems. So it's like, I basically do different questions with each set, each class, um. So if you wanna see the other ones, either you'd have to ask me directly and specifically, or you know, watch those recordings. Um also as a disclaimer, uh if, if, if you email me and I haven't responded, now is the time that I would recommend getting those things resolved. Uh cuz usually when I leave here, I'm on doing other things. Um this is the best time, so again, the original intent was for this time to be like a Q and A, I'm gonna suppress my audio just so I can focus. Um I don't know why I keep saying um so much, I definitely do that a lot, um let's switch this around. And so what we're gonna work on now, so we're just kinda going through, I've been kinda working on section one point four, going through all the questions and seeing, okay, can we find some of those questions that? Um you might be responsible for, that's not necessarily on the exam, I'm gonna get to the next question. Uh how do I get there? Here it is. Testing, testing, yeah, I think he asked him, okay, so this one, this is a, this comes from section one point four. This is question number forty-eight from the back of that section, we're asked to sketch the graph this piecewise, hang on. Sketch the graph this piecewise, define function, write the domain and range, right? So with a piecewise function, all it is, you just graph, like, these are basically two graphs in one, where you graph the first line like normal, like if you had y equals three times the absolute value of x, you graph it like normal. But then you erase the part that you don't need, so this says you keep the part where x is less than or equal to zero, so we would keep the left hand part of the graph. But this one, this is just y equals x squared, which is a parabola, but this says keep the right hand part, right? Notice that when x is zero, these two are gonna kinda overlap, so they kinda fill each other in. So the left hand part of the graph should be uh half of a absolute value, which is a straight edge, so it would have to be either B or C. The right hand part is a parabola, so they both have that, and then I think it gets filled in because of the first line, right? When x is zero, three times the absolute value of zero is zero, so it fills in that bubble, and then that's why we're gonna choose C. Alright, hopefully that made sense. Okay, and again, we don't have to go through these questions, I'm just going through these to give, just to give you guys exposure and practice and try to get you thinking a little bit. But if you have something in the homework where you got stuck, uh we can, we can pull that up and talk about it. Choose the correct domain, okay, so this is the graph, uh domain is the very left to the very right. Uh let me get this student. Domain is the very left to the very right, so then the far left in this, in this case. Uh because absolute value, you have to kinda use your imagination a little bit and know that the graph keeps going uh forever to the left, right, and same with the right. So. Uh I, for this one, the domain is gonna be all rules. Another way to visualize domain, if we took this image in answer choice C, if we took this image and squished it onto the x axis. Notice that every x is gonna be accounted for, alright, every x is gonna be accounted for. So in a graphical sense, again, domain is the very left to the very right, um another way you can visualize that is if you were to take this and smoosh it onto the x axis. It's gonna touch, every x is gonna be accounted for, right, so that's, that's why we say that, we're gonna go with this result. Okay. And then the range, so if the domain is the very left to the very right, then the range is the very bottom to the very top, right? So another way to visualize this, if we take this image and smoosh it onto the y axis, what y values are accounted for? If we smoosh this onto the y axis, the lowest y value, it looks like it's zero, and then it goes up to positive infinity. Alright, so uh x, no, y is greater than or equal to zero, right, this one. So it goes from zero to infinity. Okay, so range is the very bottom to the very top. Sketch the graph, okay, so we, we do absolute value of x, if x is between negative two and zero. And then we do square root of x is, if x is greater than or equal to zero, alright, so between negative two to zero, it should be just a diagonal line like this one. So it can't be B, that one's not drawn properly, uh it could be C. It, it could be D for right now, right? So then the second part of the graph is the square root of x, so square root of x, that graph looks like the top half of a sideways parabola. Uh A looks, looks pretty good, um because when x is zero, y is gonna be zero, uh we said it can't be B. Uh C isn't correct because when x is zero, y is zero, but they don't have it defined at the origin, right, so it can't be C in this case. And then I think for D, they use, they graphed x squared and not square root of x, so then it should be A. Okay, so the domain. So domain is the very left to the very right, if this is our graph, the far left is negative two. And the far right is positive infinity, again, if we took this image and smooshed it onto the x axis, it's gonna touch all the x's from negative two to infinity. And I think it's defined at negative two, so right here, this one. The range is the very bottom to the very top, so then the lowest y value is zero, and it goes up to positive infinity, if you continue the pattern. You can find the corresponding x for every y, so it goes from zero to infinity. Okay. Okay, so for our context, average rate of change. Uh all it is, is the slope, alright, so whenever we see average rate of change, it's just the slope, so let's take some notes here, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to the paper. Like this. This is a, this comes from section one point four, question number fifty-three. Uh we're asked to find the average rate of change. Okay, we have. We're given that f of x equals five x and. And we wanna see the average rate of change as this function changes from. X one equals zero to x two equals nine, alright, so we wanna find the average rate of change, so I will take some notes, let's hop over. Uh let's go like this. Let me make sure that's showing up, okay. So average rate of change again for our context is really just the slope, so we wanna find the slope between these points, so let's list out the ordered pairs. So for instance, when x is zero, we, the corresponding y is zero, so we have the ordered pair is zero, zero, alright? And then when x is nine, nine times five is forty-five, alright, so we have these two ordered pairs. So if we wanna find the slope, uh my recommendation is first label the point, so x one, y one, x two, y two, right? Slope formula is the rise over run, which is changing y over changing x, that's gonna be y two minus y one over x two minus x one, again, this is the slope formula. So if we plug in um the corresponding components, our y two is forty-five, y one is zero, x two is nine, minus zero. And I think that's what, five? So average rate of change, which is, is really just a slope. It's gonna be five. Let's submit this on Pearson and see how do we do. Okay, so we got, we got a result of five. Okay, let's go ahead and do this one, let me start by taking some notes, I can start here, that's fine. So this comes from section one point four fifty-five. So we're given a g of x is eight x squared minus nine. Uh we're asked to find the average rate of change. Whatever. As, let me, let me write that better. We're asked to find the average rate of change. As x changes from negative four to two, negative four to two, okay? Alright, let's hop here, okay. I'm a hot keys, are they turned, they were working, they're kinda temperamental, anyway, it's okay. The average rate of change is just a slope, so we wanna find the slope between two points, so when x is negative four, right, let's find the corresponding y. When x is negative four, negative four squared is a positive sixteen, sixteen times eight is eighty plus what? Yeah, forty-eight, eighty plus forty-eight is one twenty-eight, okay, then one twenty-eight minus nine is one nineteen. Alright, so when x is negative four, we got a y value of one nineteen, so then when x is two. Two squared is four, four times eight is thirty-two, thirty-two minus nine is twenty-three. Right, okay, hopefully we didn't make any mistakes there, let's keep going. So we're gonna label these as x one, y one, x two, y two. And we wanna find the slope, which is y two minus y one over x two minus x one, again, this is the slope. Okay. So then, if we plug in the corresponding components, we're gonna get twenty-three minus one nineteen over two minus a negative four. What is that, negative four? Hmm. So on top, it looks like we get negative four on bottom, two minus a negative four, double negative becomes positive, so that's two plus four, which is six. So it looks like, it looks like it's a negative two thirds. Okay, we're gonna go with it for right now? Oh, I think that's it, right, that's what, that's the question wanted, so the slope is the average rate of change. Okay, let's, let's go with this. Okay. So we got uh. Negative two by three, let's see how do we do. Yeah, I felt like we did, let me, let me go back and check my numbers, cuz I felt like I made a mistake, let me, let me lose my, use my calculator real quick. Okay, so let's, let me check my numbers real quick. Cuz I, I felt, I, I felt like, and I didn't really check it, let's just, let's just check it, right? So I'm gonna use a calculator this time, and I'm gonna just do it off to the side. So like for instance, negative four times negative four is a positive sixteen, sixteen times eight. I think we got the one twenty-eight minus nine, so I feel good about the one sixteen, right? When x is two, two squared is four, times eight is thirty-two, thirty-two minus nine, twenty-three, okay, I feel good with those numbers. Oh, duh. Obviously, I don't know, I think I just, I think I'm just like mentally somewhere else, okay, right here, obvious, alright? Twenty-three minus nineteen is not four, I think it's like ninety, ninety-six is what I was, I meant to put. Cuz it's like a negative four, so ninety-six, but anyway, I'm gonna do uh negative ninety-six, but twenty-three minus one nineteen, negative ninety-six, yeah. Cuz in my mind, I was like, okay, I know it's almost a hundred difference, so it should be close to a hundred, but it was off by four, so I put. I was supposed to subtract the four from a hundred, or say, you know, a hundred, four minus a hundred, but long story short, it's supposed to be a negative ninety-six, then I'm gonna say that divided by six. And we get negative sixteen. Yeah, just totally like somewhere else in my mind. Okay. Cuz this, it's kind of a challenge, like by the time I get to you all, cuz you're my last class for the day, so I'm like, my mind is just not on this, I'm thinking about all the other stuff I'm gonna be trying to do. Uh let's hop over here and let's submit that result, we got negative sixteen. Sixteen. Okay, let me check the chat real quick, the chat looks okay, I'm gonna go on to the next question. Okay, let's do this one. So this comes from section one point four, question fifty-six. I'm gonna say find the average, I'm gonna just try to shorthand it, rate of change. As x changes from negative four to nine. And we have this g of x equals eight x squared minus six, right, okay? Okay. So let's find out what are pairs, so when x is negative four, is this the same? Sixteen times eight. Right, eighty plus forty-eight, one twenty-eight, alright, one twenty-eight minus six, it's one twenty-two. So this one was one twenty-two. When x is nine, nine squared is eighty-one. Eighty-one times eight, eight times eight is six forty, so six forty-eight, six forty-eight minus six is six forty-two. We got six forty-two, this is a nine, okay? So we got these ordered pairs, I'm just gonna label them, x one, y one, x two, y two. And then I'm gonna plug them into my slope formula, slope again is y two minus y one over x two minus x one. Alright. Okay, y two is, we got six forty-two, minus y one is one twenty-two over nine minus a negative four. Okay. If that were two hundred, that would be four forty-two. Plus fifty, let's, let's just do it vertically, so two minus two is zero, four minus two is two, six minus one is five. Nine plus four is thirteen, I'm gonna use my calculator to see, does that divide evenly? Six, seven, eight, ten, let's see. Let me do some, let me see, six forty-two minus one twenty-two, okay? Divided by thirteen, forty, alright? Okay, okay, forty. Okay. Okay, and we got a result of forty there, and again, you had to stop me if, if I, I need to go back or go further into detail or explain to something. Um because if you're, if you don't say anything, then I just kinda keep going. Oh, the difference quotient, yeah, this is a good one, um so the difference quotient. So how we, how we just did average rate of change is the slope, difference quotient is essentially the slope between two points. Like if you consider a curve and you have a point on that curve, and then you could consider a second point on the curve. And so you have these two points on the curve, and you can consider a line, the second line that crosses between those two points, and you can find the slope of the second line. Right, and then as that second point's get, as that second point gets closer and closer to that first point, the slope of that second line is gonna change, right? And so the closer that second point gets to the first point, you get closer and closer to an approximation, you get a better and better approximation of the slope of the tangent line at a point, right? So this is a precursor to a concept in calculus, um but you don't need calculus to do it here for, for our discussion. Okay, so let's take some notes. This comes from section one point four, question fifty-seven. Says find, I'm just gonna say find the difference quotient. Quotient. Okay. In the form of um f of x minus f of a over x minus a. Where x is not equal to a, okay, x is not equal to a. And we have this f of x equals three x squared plus x where a equals five, okay, alright. Let's see it in action, alright, so these are the notes we just took, uh are we, are we really gonna do is plug in? Like we're gonna, I mean, I guess we could find f of a, yeah, let's just, let's, let's do, let's isolate this f of a, so since a is five, let's find f of five. So that's gonna be three x squared plus x, again, the x in this case is five. Twenty-five times three is seventy-five, plus five is eighty, right? So then f of five is eighty, so then we're gonna plug these parts in, so we're gonna say three x. We're gonna say three x squared plus x minus eighty over x minus five. Now let's see, this is like, we might be able to simplify this, like we might be able to factor and cancel some things out. So if we wanted to factor this, can we find two numbers, let me see, eight times three is twenty-four? So can we find two numbers that multiply to give us two forty and add to give us one, right? Now the two forty was a three times eighty, eighty is what, eight times ten, so eight is two times two times two. Ten is two times five, and we still have that three, alright? Eight times ten times three, okay? So now, we wanna see, can we find two, and more than likely, it's gonna be like towards the end of the list, but I'm, I'm gonna exhaust all the factors. Of two forty, right, and it's, I'm, I'm doing this kinda intentionally, so you can kinda see some things. So we're looking for two numbers that multiply to give us a negative two forty and add to give us one, so I'm gonna just go through the list, I'm gonna start with one. And it's gonna be one times two forty, alright, but that's, I was said it, now if we do two, notice here. If, if I use this two, here, let's do it this way. Suppose I use this two, this two is gone, what's left over, we have eight times fifteen, ten times twelve is one twenty, right? So if we use that first two, we have one twenty left over. Alright, but that adds up to like one eighteen, can we do a three, yeah, there's a three in there, right? Cuz I got the three from right here, so if I use this three already, what's left over? Eight times ten, which is eighty. Yeah, eighty, right, so if we use that three, we have eighty. We have eighty left over, but that adds up to seventy-seven, right, so let's keep going. We can do a four, cuz we have a four in this list, the four comes from right here, if we've used this four, what's left over? Four times five is twenty, times three is sixty, so if we use the four, we have sixty left over. Alright, notice, look how fast the right hand side is coming down, right, which is what we need. We're trying to get all the way down to the line where these add up to one, let's keep going, we can do five. If, if we use this five, what's left over? Six and eight, it's forty-eight. It's forty-eight, alright? We can do six, cuz we have six in our list, six is right here, these guys, if we use this six, what's left over? Eight times five is forty. We're almost there, six, there's no seven, so we don't have to worry about seven, uh we can do eight. If, if we use this eight, right here, these three are gone. What's left, six and five is thirty, I just wanted you to see like how to handle these factors. Uh there's no nine, so we don't have to worry about nine, but we can do ten, if we do ten, it should be twenty-four, let me show you the ten. The ten is like if we use one of the twos and a five, and what should be left over is twenty-four, eight times three is twenty-four, right? Uh there's no eleven, I think we can do twelve though, I'm gonna kinda come over here to the side. We can do twelve, the twelve, let me show you, is right here, two of the twos with the three. Okay. So then, if those are gone, we have four and, four times five is twenty left over. Twenty, alright, this adds up to eight, we're almost there. Let's see, we got a visitor. Let him in. Okay. Let's see, twelve, there's no thirteen, there's no fourteen, we can do fifteen. Alright, so fifteen comes from here, these two, right, if we use this fifteen, we have sixteen left over up, I think those are the numbers we were looking for. Fifteen and sixteen, these are two numbers that multiply to give us two, negative two forty and add to give us a positive one. So what we're gonna do is rewrite this middle term, this plus x that you see in green at the top of the screen. We're gonna re, rewrite that using the fifteen and the sixteen, uh let me think about it. Okay, I'm, I'm intentionally gonna put the fifteen next to the three and the sixteen next to the eighty, I'm putting the fifteen next to the three cuz they have something in common. And I'm pretty sure the sixteen and the eighty have something in common, right, so I'm gonna rewrite our original statement, this uh. This three x squared, now that plus x, I'm gonna rewrite it as minus fifteen x plus sixteen x, and then I'm gonna say minus eighty. Okay, I'm still gonna leave the denominator. So now, we, we, I'm using a technique called factor by grouping, um actually. Let me, I'll finish this out, but I'm gonna show you another technique that I think might, might work for some people, hopefully. So now, if we look at the first two terms, what do they have in common, we can factor out, it looks like a three x from the first two. And we're gonna be left with x minus five, the hint is, we're looking for another x minus five over here, right? What do the second two have in common, is it sixteen? I think we can factor out a sixteen from both of those terms, and we'll, we'll, we'll get this, this guy comes down. So now on top, we have a common binomial factor, both terms, again, terms are things that we add and subtract, factors are things that we multiply and divide. So both terms in this case, the main two terms, the left and right-hand side on top, they both have the thing in common. They both have that blue thing. So we can factor out the blue thing. It's called a common binomial factor. And we should be left with this three X plus sixteen. Now, we get this nice little thing that happens, right? You do wanna be clear that X can't be five, because it makes the original function, the original expression um undefined. But then, you know, this guy cancels this. And we're left with this. Okay, that was an adventure, but I wanted to kinda bring some of those concepts and, and techniques to your attention. Uh, now, let's back up. Um, once we found the fifteen and the sixteen, there's another technique I wanna bring to your attention. I, I've had students use this following technique, and it's called like the box method, right? Um, we found the fifteen and the sixteen. So let me, let me get a copy of this guy. I just wanna show another, what's the time? Okay, we got about ten minutes. I just wanna show an alternate way to factor something like this, alright? So once we found the fifteen and the sixteen, we can do the following. So I'm gonna make a box in this fashion, right? In the upper left-hand cor- corner goes the, the leading term, which is this three X squared. In the bottom right-hand corner goes the constant term, which is the negative eighty. And then we're gonna, in the, on the off diagonal, the other diagonal, we're gonna put the fifteen and the sixteen, so negative. Negative. Was it negative fifteen? Yeah. We're gonna put the negative fifteen X that we found and the positive sixteen X that we found, right? So now, this is called the, the box method of factoring. If I look at the two on top, what, what's the greatest common factor, or what can we factor out of the two on top? They both have three X, right? So we can factor out three X. If we look at the two on the bottom. What can we factor out of the two on the bottom? I think they both have sixteen, that factors out evenly. Uh, so it's gonna be a positive sixteen. Okay, if we look at the two on the left, what, what can we factor out of the two on the left? I think they both have X, and that's it. That's the only factor they have in common. What do the two on the right have? Uh, I think it's what, negative? Is it negative five? Yeah, I think we can factor out negative five from both of those. Alright, so then the claim is that the original factors into. X minus five and three X plus sixteen. So that was just another. You can see them together like right, right here, right? Okay, so let's use this, let's use this to go back and answer the question. Okay? So ultimately, we got the difference quotient down to. Three X plus sixteen. Three X plus sixteen. Boy, that was an adventure, right? That's why, that's why I said, yeah, well, this is, and I, I don't remember if we did something like this in the homework. This could definitely pop up on the exam. This is why I'm going back, cause I realize there's a lot of questions. That potentially could show up that you may not have been exposed to, so I'm, I'm trying to increase your exposure. So at least we have it, you know, uh, uh, on file. Okay, let's, let's do another one. That was a good one, I like that. So this is another way of describing difference quotient. So in the previous, we had like, X was our, our point in question. And then A was like some other X value. So this one, H just means the, the change in X, right? So it's still the same concept, it's just articulated a different way. A is just some small change on the X axis. So instead of just saying X one and X two. Now we have the original X and we have some small change from that X, right? But it's essentially the same thing. Just expressed a different way. Okay, so for this function, construct and simplify the difference quotient, okay? This comes from section one point four, question sixty-one. I'm just gonna say find the difference quotient. Okay? Find the difference quotient. Uh, and they want, they wanted in the form of F of X plus H. Again, H is just some small change in the X value. F of X plus H minus F of X. Over H, alright? And we're given that F of X. Is X squared plus two. Okay? Let's hop over here to the tablet. Okay? So first, let's go ahead and find F of X plus H, alright? So let's just, by itself, let's just find F of X plus H. So what we're gonna do is take F of X, but replace each X with. Replace each X with this blue thing. Alright? So F of X, the first thing I'm gonna do is replace the X with a blank set of parentheses, so we get X squared plus two. And then what color goes into the blank parentheses? The blue thing. Alright? So then if we expand it. We get X squared plus two X H. Plus H squared plus two, right? I think we've combined, so that's, that's the expansion of F of X plus H. So then we're gonna take this and plug it into our difference quotient that we see at the top. So we're gonna have this X squared plus two X H plus H squared plus two. Minus, I'm gonna go ahead and distribute the negative into F of X, so it's gonna be minus X squared minus two. I'm gonna say all of this over H, alright? So now we should get some cancellation going on. We got a negative two here, positive two. Negative X squared cancels the positive X squared. Alright? So then we're left with. We're gonna have this two X H plus H squared over H. So on top, now all the terms that are left, we can factor out an H. We can factor out H. So then the following happens. H times two X plus H. Over H, alright? And so then these, this cancels this. And we are left with two X plus H, okay? Okay? Alright? Alright, so let's submit this comparison and see how do we do. Let's see. So we get two X plus H. So then, the, the next step in calculus, there's this concept called the limit. So H is just a small change. Now, what happens is that change gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and it es- it essentially becomes zero, right? There's essent- essentially no change. It gets so small that there's essentially no change between these two points. So that's called, that concept is called the limit, right? So we would take the limit as H goes to zero, but that's, that's, that's a discussion from calculus. For our discuss, for our purposes, we would stop at this point, alright? Let me see the time. Um, I don't wanna keep you past four forty-five, I just wanna kinda try maybe one more, hopefully it doesn't go too long. This, I'm gonna go ahead and do this one, this is definitely gonna be the last one for the day. Okay? So one more difference quotient. Uh, this comes from section one point four. This is question sixty-two. We have this F of X plus H minus F of X. Over H. Where F of X, I want any more space in that, I could do this though. F of X is gonna be equal to four X squared. Plus four X plus two, alright? This is a, this one might be a little bit, but a little bit involved, but let's uh, let's go for it. Okay? So first, let's find F of X plus H. We need to replace each X with X plus H and simplify. So F of, first I'm gonna replace each X with a blank parentheses. Four X squared plus four X plus two. And then into the blank parentheses, we're gonna put X plus H. X plus H, X plus H, alright? So then if we expand, I'm gonna use some shortcuts. We're gonna have four times, it's gonna be X squared plus two X H plus H squared. That's gonna be four X plus four H plus two, that's not a two. Alright, if we distribute this four. Okay, we'll get four X squared plus eight X H plus four H squared. Plus four X plus four H plus two, right? So that's the fully expanded um, F of X plus H, right? So then we wanna take that and subtract F of X. Uh, I'm probably just gonna copy and paste and shrink some stuff down to get it to fit on one line. Okay? I wanna copy, I'm gonna paste. Um, and I'm also gonna go ahead and do, now if I say minus F of X, I need to distribute a negative. So I'm gonna have minus. Four X squared minus four X minus two. And this would essentially be all over H. What I'm gonna do is shrink this down so it fits onto one line. I'm just using my, my digital, my technology because I can. So I'm gonna shrink it down and rearrange it. And then expand it back as, as large as I can. So essentially like that, right? That's the idea of what's going on. Okay? So all I did, I took that F of X plus H result that we found, uh, let me do one other thing. And, and I subtracted F of X from it, alright? Okay? So now I said F of X plus H minus F of X, some things should cancel. This four X squared cancels this four X squared. This four X cancels this one. This two cancels this one, alright? So let's, let's write what was, what's left over. We have eight X H plus four H squared plus four H, okay? We're gonna say over H. Finally got to some interesting questions. I'm so excited about this, right? So now, at this stage, notice that every term in the numerator all have H, so let's factor out that H. So if we factor out an H from each term on top, we're left with eight X plus four H plus four. Again, over H, now we can cancel. When you're doing difference quotient of this form, um, you, you should be able to have this H, like be able to factor that, alright? Uh, if that's not there, usually you've done something wrong, right? So then the final result here, after we do the cancellation, is gonna be eight X. Plus four H plus four. Okay, I got this result. So in calculus, once we get this result, and, and honestly, there's a shortcut where you can look at, look at the question that we started with and get the answer like immediately. We would take the limit as H goes to zero, so it's like, it's almost like H is equal to zero, so then we will be left with eight X plus four. But anyway, for our purposes, we would stop here. Let's hop back over to Pearson and see how do we do. Okay, the difference quotient, the result that we got, eight X plus four, now this, let me see. Eight X plus four H plus four. Cool, cause that was wrong, that was gonna be such a pain to go back and try to like fix, right? So, alright, so we're gonna actually end the session here, uh, if, if there aren't any burning questions. Uh, like I was saying, we'll, we'll end the session here, and from one beautiful mind to another, enjoy the rest of your weekend. And we'll be back, same place, same, same time, same place next week, okay? Take care.